Section, comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
Kip Ward.
Here.
Deanna Hitten.
Here.
Riley Holdland.
Here. Would you please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone, nation under God and indivisible, with whoever is given the justice.
Thank you again so much. Okay. We're gonna jump right into the consent agenda. We have minutes of the meeting, March 27th, 2017. Minutes of work session meeting for March 6th, 2017. Minutes of work session meeting on February 6th, 2017. Minutes of meeting on January 23rd, 2017. And minutes of meeting on January 18th, 2017. Anyone here to approve the consent agenda, one through five?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're at comments from citizens present on agenda and on agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. Okay, so let's start out with Rex Capri. Did I get that right? Okay. So again, when you come forward and choose any chair you want, just state your name for the record. Don't need your address or anything else. And just stay close to the microphone. If you see me motioning you, you gotta get a little closer.
My name is Rex Capri. I'm from 255 Northwest 17th Street in Newport. And I'm here tonight to speak on ballot measure number 21-177. I've given each of you a copy of the voter's pamphlet that's coming up on the May 16th election. I just wanna state first of all that I'm opposed to this measure and I wanna go over some reasons why. First of all, this measure is listed as to ban aerial spraying and to create rights for natural communities and ecosystems. I think this measure is very poorly written, vaguely written, especially on the aerial spraying part. It doesn't specifically explain what aerial spraying is. I'm a commercial fisherman, I have been for 48 years. And we're reading into this measure that this could possibly affect the fishing industry too because of the lack of definition of aerial spraying. And there's a new boatyard over in Toledo, they just put in a large travel lift for bigger fishing vessels to haul out and do maintenance work. One of the things we always do when we haul out is repaint the bottom. The bottom paint on boats contains algicides and molluscicides to prevent growth on the bottom of the boats. The spraying on these bigger vessels, because the hulls are so big, requires that it's done out of a man lift. It's too high to do from the ground. So it could easily be interpreted as aerial spraying because of the lack of a definitive definition in this measure here. And it does, because under pesticides, their definition, under the ordinance language, they do list quite a number of different herbicides, pesticides, virusides even. That's another concern there too is that even the county wouldn't be able to, according to this, wouldn't be able to spray in case of an outbreak of something like Zika virus or West Nile virus because aerial spraying and the pesticides that they list in this. So there's a lot of different industries that have concern here besides the timber industry, the agriculture, the commercial pest control people. You know, this bill's poorly written and it really didn't have to be that way. If these people knew that they were specifically targeting aerial spraying of timberlands, they could've fine tuned this language to specifically specify what that aerial spraying was. Because it doesn't, I think it can have some serious unintended consequences for our county and all the cities in this county. So I would just ask that all of you on the council here, if you would please just read the measure and even more importantly, if you would read the text of the ordinance, which is what the law would state if this measure were to pass. And I think if you do that personally and objectively, you'll easily see some of the issues that can develop from this. So I would just ask you at this time to please, you know, and also all voters in the county, if they would do the same. You know, take it personally as an individual, read this and make up your own mind on this issue. But read it carefully, read it through and interpret it for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. Joe Steer. Again, folks, we don't need your addresses. Wanna give them to us, feel free.
I like the way I tell you where I live. Depends what I do tonight, where I live or where I live.
If I could have you-
Name's Joe Steer. I'm not a resident of Lincoln City, but I'm-
Joe, can I get you to pull that microphone a little bit closer to you? There you go, perfect.
Name's Joe Steer. Not a resident of Lincoln City, but I am a close by resident. I've always utilized this town, of course, for my groceries and hardware and stuff like that, so. And you guys, as elected officials, do have an influence in this area and even the area around it, so it's part of your responsibility. Farmer, forester, and I have been a fisherman. But on this measure, the front page, you read it and it states how it's against aerial spraying in the forest. I would be a strong advocate of keeping that tool in forestry. I mean, I use it all the time, love to answer questions, but the front page is mainly fluff. If you really get into this measure, you look at what's going on and it talks about corporations. Well, that's any business entity and then it mentions all these public entities also that would be covered. And then it mentions aerial spraying and it's defined as physical deposition. Let's let the lawyers and judges worry about what that actually means. So I started looking into it and there's an East Coast group that actually wrote it. This is kind of boilerplate off of what they do. And this group actually has made quite a bit of money when counties or municipalities have either not passed this ordinance talking about the ecosystems and talking about community rights. They like to go in there and just start lawsuits. So that's something to worry about. So what they do is they take something that the, some of the locals around here are not really in favor of pesticides in the forest or on farms or in the fishing industry, so they appeal to those sentiments and that's how they get this going. And that's what I believe on that. The direct action part, you know, this county has had direct action before, even though it was illegal. In the late 70s, early 80s, we had quite a bit of direct action taking place in the woods. That had to do with the anti-herbicide folks at that time. And there were public employees with the county that were actually even shot at because they thought they were applying herbicides. So that direct action part is very scary in my mind and to actually make that legal is, well, it's illegal to make it legal, who knows? It's just gonna be in the courts, it's gonna be a problem. And that's why I'm appealing to you as elected officials, I would much rather have an elected official making some decision, because at least I have a recourse on if I don't like your decision, than some unelected, out-of-county reps calling themselves community right folks coming in and suing for this or suing for that. So that's my statement. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you coming forward. And I'm sorry, is it Tom or Tim Miller?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Tim Miller, I'm the president of Lincoln County Farm Bureau. You want my address? My address is 3- Nope, okay.
Maybe pull that mic a little bit closer, Tim. Pull it forward. Beautiful. Thank you.
There we go. Third generation farmer, timber owner in the Sluts Valley. We've been there for about 110 years now. I do everything in integrated pest management. I don't spray unless I have to, but this measure would make me not be able to spray to control invasive species on my property. There's three things that I really dislike about the measure and I think everybody should dislike about the measure. Number one is defining aerial spraying as by an aerial method. It's been, aerial method has been defined by everything from Webster's definition of aerial, putting into the air, to spraying by aircraft. Nobody knows what that means, not even the people that are organizing this. I went to one of their first meetings and asked them what that meant and they said, "Well, if your feet are on the ground, you're not aerial spraying." I says, "Well, if I'm on my tractor." Well, that would be aerial spraying. Now, they say aerial spraying is only from a helicopter. These are the people that are putting forth this, they don't even know what it means. And this measure will allow people, anybody, it says people, doesn't say residents of Lincoln County, that if you don't like or don't think the county is enforcing the measure like you think it should be enforced, you can take direct action. Again, direct action is not identified. They don't say what direct action is. Is that lawsuit? Is that trespass? Is that demonstration? So will that allow people to come on my property to see if I've been spraying or not? With that, and this gives them immunity from prosecution? I asked Sheriff Landers, you know, what would he do? And he says, "Well, he really couldn't, wouldn't be able to help me if this measure passed." The third thing is giving the rights to ecosystems, plants, rocks, trees, and gives somebody the right to sue for those trees. And what would that do if you wanted to develop a piece of property, build a road, cut a tree down? Then somebody could sue you for cutting the tree down and make you put it back, the road back to where it was before you started? These are serious things that I think all voters should read this measure very carefully. And if you don't understand it, which I don't think anybody understands, you need to vote no on that. And I would ask you as the councilman and mayor of Lincoln City to endorse a no vote like the county commissioners have, the sheriff Landers has, the city of Newport, the ports of Newport and Toledo. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna murder this. It's Bria or Bray? Bree, thank you.
Yeah. And unfortunately Sheriff Curtis Landers couldn't make it tonight and so I've been authorized to read his voter's pamphlet statement for all of you tonight. So that's what I'll be doing. And then I also have a copy that I'll pass out to you at the end. So it starts out, "Public safety notice about ballot measure 21-177. Voters are being asked this May to consider whether to restrict the use of pesticides in the county. As your elected sheriff, I do not think my role is to weigh in on that issue. I do however, feel an obligation to warn you about a highly troubling part of this measure regarding how it will be enforced. This component creates real concerns for me about its impact on the safety of law enforcement officers and the general public. Section 5D of the ordinance text allows any person, whether they live in Lincoln County or not, to enforce the rights and prohibitions of this law through direct action if they feel the county or courts have failed to sufficiently enforce or defend this ordinance. A law that would encourage vigilanteism via direct action should give real pause to every voter in this election." The measure goes on to say, "If enforcement through direct action is commenced, this law shall prohibit any private or public actor from filing a civil or criminal action against those participating in direct action. My deputies and other law enforcement in the county would be unable to enforce laws against trespassing, vandalism, destruction of property, and even bodily harm. There are no boundaries placed on what constitutes direct action, meaning this would authorize damage to property and even persons. Our county faces real law enforcement challenges with a vast amount of territory to cover and limited patrol resources. I am very concerned about the strain this measure would put on my office, ultimately impacting public safety countywide. Please closely consider these concerns for public safety when evaluating and thoroughly reading measure 21-177. I encourage a no vote on measure 21-177, Lincoln County Sheriff Curtis Landers." Thank you.
Anthony, were you gonna speak on the public hearing? You scratched out what you had, you were gonna speak about Anthony Penicel? No, not here? Okay, well, let's go over that. Lori, did you, are you here still? Did you wanna come up now? Okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lori Arso Torres, Executive Director of the Lincoln City Chamber. And I just wanted to quickly make sure that everybody is aware that it's Community Days coming up, week after next. We spent a lot of time planning this this year and when we sat down, when we decided, you know, what are we gonna do for Community Days? We really wanted to include events that locals do. So we decided, what do we do? We surf and we have bonfires on the beach, so Friday night, we're starting off with a bonfire on the beach. Cindy Phosphat with Northwest Natural is putting that on. And then Saturday, we've added a surf and earth event, 'cause it happens to be Earth Day. So we're adding a lot of elements about the ocean, ocean education, we're having live bands, we'll have Rusty Truck Brewery at the Cultural Center for this surf and earth event. So that's a fun new one that we've added. Ducky Derby will be back on the D River, so that'll be fun. We've got a movie in Spanish this year for our Latino community and we're having a class, Secrets of Salsa. What else? Lots of other things. We've got radio days that we'll be doing, Chamber Business of the Year Awards, we've got a lot of those coming in and of course, we'll end the week on the 29th with the Community Days banquet. And this year, it happens to fall on the same weekend as the Great Oregon Coast Garage Sale. So we have been so busy at the Chamber Office with the garage sale, we've got over, well over 100 entries into the garage sale and we'll have those on the map available on the 19th. And I had no idea how many people this brings in from out of state. Yeah, we've had so much interest in this. So it'll be a very, very busy week, so hope to see everybody at the events and definitely at the Community Days banquet. Thank you.
And Lori, is there still time for people to get their ballots in if they wanna nominate?
Yes, we've extended it till the 14th, or Friday, yes, 14th.
Thank you.
And I've got posters, I'll leave up here if anybody can put them up.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else who did not sign up, wish to speak for the council? I've got a couple people here speaking on the public hearings, I've got you here. Do you know anybody? Okay. Then we move on. We have a chance to hear Martha Watts about Shiloh, the Gathering Place. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Martha Watts, I am the founder of Shiloh, the Gathering Place Ministries. I wanna thank the mayor and city manager and city council for inviting us here tonight to share a little bit about who we are and what we do in the community. First off, some of you may not know, we are a licensed cafe and restaurant. A lot of people think we serve the homeless and that's pretty much all we do. But one of the ways we fund our resources and our services is by providing food to the public. So we hope that those of you that are watching or here today will come by and have a bite to eat because all the proceeds go to support what we do each and every day. We're all volunteers, there's no, nobody's paid there. So that's one of the big ways that we could use your support here at Shiloh is by coming in and having a bite to eat. Best thing I could do to show you what Shiloh is is show you a little bit of a video and that hopefully might explain some of who we are and then maybe I can answer some of your questions.
Lincoln City is a small tourist town on the central Oregon coast, a place where many people visit to enjoy the natural beauty. But the roughly 10,000 year-round residents know that there is another side to our little beach town. It's a place of great needs and few resources. Statistically, we are above state and national averages for broken families, drug and alcohol abuse, people living below the poverty line, and homelessness. Lincoln City has no traditional shelters or transitional housing options, few state agencies, and many people who struggle every day for ways to meet their most basic needs. In October of 2016, Shiloh, the Gathering Place, opened its doors in a simple storefront in one of the busiest parts of town. Shiloh has the feel of a living room, a place where people can come in out of the rain and feel welcome. Since we opened, Shiloh has served over 600 gallons of hot homemade soup, along with plenty of other delicious food. Members of the community often stop by for lunch and make a donation to support Shiloh, but the food is always free to anyone who needs it. And it doesn't stop with meals. We also give away food from our food pantry, along with clothing items, jackets, sleeping bags, and tents. In cooperation with other community resources, we help to provide showers, free laundry service, and bus passes. Our volunteers help guests pursue unemployment assistance, seek affordable housing situations, find roommates and medical care. And throughout the week, Shiloh hosts 12-step recovery programs and a grief recovery group. But just as important as the practical help we give our guests, is the compassion and warmth they experience at Shiloh, the encouragement of knowing that they are not alone in their struggles. Through the leadership of our founder and president, Martha Watts, along with a great team of volunteers, our board, and a supportive faith community, Shiloh is turning love into action in Lincoln City. In just a short time since our doors have been open, we've already seen the power of simple acts of compassion to change lives and help hurting people try to open them. We look forward to years of daily real transformations for our community as more people catch the vision of Shiloh.
That's what Shiloh does on a daily basis. We're up, we're running, and we're trying to make a difference in our community. One thing I'd like to also ask everyone here today and watching on TV and pass the word around, Wednesday, we will be posting on our Facebook site, Shiloh, the Gathering, Shiloh the Gathering Place Ministries, a website that we'd all like you to go to. We've entered a grant for $100,000 and it's gonna be based on our video. So we're asking the community to vote for Lincoln City and to vote for this grant so that we can get some much-needed funds. We're also here tonight to ask the city to kick in and match those funds. We're hopeful that we will get this grant. Our desire is to open up a, not a transitional shelter where people can stay year-round. I don't believe that that's the answer. I believe our goal is to get people's feet on the ground. We're looking at a 90-day transitional facility to help people with recovery programs, to vet them, to help people seek jobs, and to find affordable housing. We're not here to coddle anyone. We're here to make a difference in lives and see people to be self-sufficient, to be free from drugs and alcohol. We have a lot of young women that come into our facility that are in violent environments, a lot of people that don't know how to work because they've been so many years in the same environment that they never had the opportunity. We'd like to see Lincoln City have job programs available. We'd also like to see Lincoln City go after state, federal, and county grants for behavioral health in this community. A lot of are homeless, most of them are mentally ill, a big portion of them. We do not have the resources at Shiloh to help those that are mentally ill. We can love them, we can feed them, we could help them get their IDs, medical treatment, but we can't diagnose them and we can't provide the medications that they need. I have one young man that is so brilliant, he's, he has to be a genius, but he hears voices. We wanna help him. When we've talked to him in the past, he's had nothing but the opportunity where they've given him depression medication. He's smart enough to know he's not depressed. He says, "I'm not depressed, I hear voices." That's one of the things that we could do is tap into the federal, state, and county grants for mental health here. Then we could address some of the issues of the homeless. The other issues of the homeless again is drug addiction and alcohol addiction. We want to have a program where they come in and they spend three months in rehab, not outpatient, but inpatient rehab, and really getting the help that they need. So that's what Shiloh's desire is, but we need the help. We've located some buildings that we think are promising for this and we're not asking the city to hand us a building. If you have one, that would be great, but we're asking for assistance to continue the work that we've started here. And we're also asking for funds to keep the doors open. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I would like to know, when, what hours do you serve food?
We serve food from 10:00 AM till 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday.
Do you also take direct donations from people? And what days do you accept donations?
Anytime. You got something, I'll come get it.
Yeah, sure.
They can mail it to us or drop it off, we do accept donations. One of the great things is that we've brought the community together. Many of the local churches and the ministerial association has now, through Shiloh, we have set up a benevolence fund. This fund is being funded through the churches because so many people go to the churches for help. And what they do is they go from church to church to church. And this fund and this program that Shiloh will be doing through the help of the churches is we will be vetting these people. So when they go into the church, they say, "Hey, we have a benevolent fund, go over there." And then we're able to work with these individuals and find out what help they really do need. And some of them are habitual. You know, they know that we're softies in this community, we give. This community gives and gives and gives. But we also need to be responsible and wise stewards of the money in the fund, so this way, we kinda cut out some of that repetitive that we see out there in the community.
Also, do you find that if there were volunteer opportunities for the individuals that need assistance, do you think that they would partake in those volunteer opportunities in town? If there was a way to get them there or something like that? Do you feel that kind of thing, that they would like to do something or are they not there yet?
Yes. Some are. We have one gentleman that, he was actually a transient, he spent 50 years of his life in the streets. But he was on social security disability, not enough to have a place to live, but he would go volunteer at the community center. He would go to the warming shelter and set up beds and he'd help with us sweeping around. So they do, a lot of people do want to earn money or to do something. They just need a chance and needing an opportunity and some just need training. And also employers that are willing to give someone who maybe has a record a chance.
You mentioned, again, thank you for the presentation, you mentioned a 90-day, transition facility. facility. Could you talk a little bit more about what that would be? Someone could come and stay and have a bed and have work they could do? I mean, what do you see as that?
The goal is to, 90 days is generally the best amount of time. 60 days is not enough. Most people who are addicted need a in-house, in-home facility. They need basically checking in, drug checks, drug testing. They get up at 6 o'clock in the morning, they have to be out looking for work. If they don't have a job, then they need to be volunteering somewhere in the community, whether it's through the city, picking up trash, or another nonprofit. They need to be involved in different rehab programs that are out there in the community. They can sleep there, but they can't stay there all day. Basically, come daytime, just like your workday, they get up, they get out. They need to show that they're actively looking for work and donate so many hours per week or per day. But they also need to be getting the mental health that they need as well. So it's a, it's a big, there's no one answer. Again, people need to be vetted. There's some people we can't help that need to be in a state facility, that need actual, you know, Thorazine or something. So we could do what we can do, but we can't fix everyone.
Do you, so that's what would happen if I needed a place to stay and I needed some help and I would go there? What is it that you and your associates would do? They would provide the place, they would manage it? Would they coordinate services? I'm not quite sure what your job would be.
Lots of hats. We would have the facility. We would obviously need volunteers and/or paid people, it just depends on how much this grows. When we started Shiloh and we opened our doors, we just did it. I didn't know how it was going to pay the bills. Still don't, from day to day. But we're still open. And so my point was to do it. Just take the step and the rest will fall into place. And it has, and it continues to. So get the building. Okay, can we afford this rent? How can we afford the rent or lease? We need the volunteers. Construction, maybe. In some cases, you know, you need the ADA bathroom, shower facilities. We've already priced lockers. So we've done some of our homework. It's just a matter of getting the facility and, again, the community backing behind us, not just financially, but the support emotionally.
I just have one more question, which is, if you could open those doors today, how many people do you think a month that you would have staying there?
Local, I would say you could have 50-plus realistically, if they knew that there was a place that they could go and get help. Transit is a different story.
Sure. Men, women, families? Sorry.
Our goal, absolutely. Families is a big part of this. But Family Promise is doing great things. The churches in the community have been very supportive with Family Promise. You know, the churches and the faith-based community have really been the spokes and the hub. And so we have places like Family Promise and Shiloh and the warming shelter that really we couldn't exist if it wasn't for the faith community.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your presentation. I wouldn't even know that Shiloh's there. As I walk down the street, I wouldn't have the vaguest notion that it's there. How do you maintain acceptable behavior or is that not a problem in your area?
We haven't really had any issues to speak of. I think they're, most of them very respectable of us. If there is an issue, they always, they mind. They know that we're the hand that's feeding them. They come in, they get dry, we give them fresh socks and clothes and jackets and the things that they need, and we feed them and we take good care of them. It's a, when I set Shiloh up, I wanted it to be a home setting, a place for people who didn't have a home, that they could come in and feel like they did have a home. And so they are very respectable. Every once in a while, you might have someone comes in that's a little bit tanked, and as long as they're not disruptive and they're not abusive in any way, that's fine. We would rather them get sober, you know, give them some soup and some coffee and then send them on their way than have them go out into the road trying to cross the street. So again, everybody's been respectful and we haven't had any issues. We have families coming in with children, eating lunch, eating, again, it's the haves and the have's not that come and meet together in one place, and it's quite unique.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, by the way, for that presentation, and thanks for everything you're doing. Have you gone up to Portland at all to observe the different organizations or programs that they have to combat homelessness?
I haven't necessarily visited the ones in Portland, but I've spent years in the streets working with different organizations. We are familiar with Random Acts of Kindness that is in Portland. They do a lot of feeding of people underneath the bridges. I don't know that there's any one answer or one organization. It's a big, it's a big issue, and it's not anything that you could put a Band-Aid on. I think you need to address all of it, the mental health, the affordable housing, the job training. So everything pretty much has to work hand-in-hand. You can't just feed someone and think that they're okay. It's a bigger picture. And so all the organizations out there, we can glean from and learn from, but I think it's a big task and it's bigger than any one facility can do.
I ask that because Sisters of the Road Gap Bay in Portland seems a lot like your organization that you have. If it's still open, which I think it is, have a really successful model that's lasted many years.
I'd like to check that out.
Thank you. It means a lot. I know you've given up a lot and I know you don't want the attention, but I would suggest anyone who wants to hear Martha's story, it's well worth hearing what she has sacrificed to make this happen. She followed the Lord's call, and we have a place that is there to help people because of what she's done. So thank you, Martha, and you have our support.
Appreciate the time that you let us come share.
Thank you.
All right. My Sisters, Martha? Oh, you know, we didn't get your address either. I wrote that down. Martha, if you could just connect them, I can give the address of the gathering.
We're at 2139 Northwest Highway 101. And again, our Facebook is Shiloh the Gathering Ministries. And we will be posting that site. It's through USA Today. It's called Community Thrive. You just have to find our video, and it's a $100,000 grant, and we want it. So go vote for us.
And is there a phone number?
For us?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 541-921-9105.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Kristi Kamacho, My Sisters Place.
Hi, my name's Ashley Michelle Gayler. I'm a shelter advocate at My Sisters Place.
Welcome.
April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. My Sisters Place is a sexual, domestic, and dating violence prevention and intervention program. Our mission is to comprehensively support those affected by interpersonal violence in Lincoln County by providing shelter and practical assistance, by promoting community awareness, and actively working to change the community norms around violence. Here are just a few facts about sexual assault in Oregon. Sexual assault affects every Oregonian, whether as a victim or survivor, a family member, friend, partner, neighbor, employer, or coworker. About one in four adult women in Oregon has been the victim of rape in their lifetime, and nearly one in five men in Oregon has experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. Working together compassionate, courageous, and dedicated individuals, local organizations, and other partners have provided services and support for victims and survivors and have worked to prevent sexual violence for decades. In 2015, we at My Sisters Place sheltered a total of 51 women and 30 children for a total of 3,067 bed nights. We answered 426 crisis calls and 866 total calls. We helped survivors create 392 safety plans and file 52 protective orders. Although we serve people from all over Lincoln County, as well as a small percentage from elsewhere in Oregon and from out of state, the highest percentage of clients served came from Lincoln City, with a total of over 21%. We know that sexual violence is preventable and that all communities are strengthened when we promote healthy and safe attitudes, beliefs, and behaviors, while also working to eliminate tolerance for violence. Every individual and community in Oregon has a role to play to help eliminate sexual violence by promoting social change. So tonight, we at My Sisters Place ask that you join us and our many community partners in recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and that you find out, and we challenge you to find out how you as individuals and as a community can help bring awareness to and help prevent all forms of sexual violence in Lincoln City and throughout Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. Mr. Mayor, if I may. So again, in our agenda, it says Kristi Kamacho, but that's not your name.
No, I'm Michelle Gayler. She's our outreach coordinator. I'm an advocate here at the shelter itself.
Let me ask you some questions.
Of course.
Do you do presentations for the middle and high school students?
You know, I believe that we have, historically, I personally have not, but would love the opportunity.
Not you, but you're.
Yeah, I would love the opportunity to. I think it's a great tool.
I personally know many women that have had problems. Is there a number that people can call? You know, you said you gave the numbers for the crisis and the total calls, but...
Absolutely. We have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year crisis line. Call our helpline. The phone number is 541-994-5959. And we rotate, on a rotating basis, we all take turns answering calls whatever time they come in.
Do you take third-party calls for those that are too scared to call? Or does it have to be the victim itself?
We appreciate what we call a warm handoff. People call, but we would like to speak to the survivor or the victim themselves. And mostly that's because unless somebody asks for help themselves, you know, many well-meaning family members think they're ready when they're not.
Right. Do you, okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for what you do. All right. We are now at the public hearing, public comment section. To receive public comment regarding the proposed Northeast 36th Street and West Devils Lake Road sewer reimbursement district. It is now 6:47 PM. The public hearing for formation of a sewer reimbursement district on Northeast 36th Street and West Devils Lake Road is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for forming a reimbursement district to extend sewer service. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the au...
I'm sorry. Your Honor, I have spoken to one of the families. I've had discussions with them about their failed septic system. I have no bias before the hearing.
Thank you. I'm trying to flag someone down to close the door. Thank you, Chief Scott. Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to consider this matter? Hearing none. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows: preliminary matters, staff report, public comment in favor, public comment opposed, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations, and decision. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance, which I know is. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you wish to have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Speakers may have up to three minutes. Staff report, please.
Good evening. So this is a public hearing continued. I want to start off a little bit by setting the stage for sort of the state of our sewers in Lincoln City. We in the city have about 280 septic systems in the city limits. There's also roughly 60 or so vacant lots that don't have sewer service available. Previously, most of our, almost all of our sewers have been constructed through local improvement districts in the 70s, and then again, a lot of in the 90s. So recently, we've done, we've created some districts to extend sewer service. One's been a local improvement district. Two have been reimbursement districts. I'm going to talk about the distinctions of the two types. But these previous ones that we've just completed recently anyway, they have been all for pressure sewer systems. So now I'm going to start with the background of the public hearing and why we're here tonight. So we did have a property owner that had a family septic system. Their drain field is toast. Currently, they're pumping, they have a tank, they're regularly pumping it. This area, as it turned out, this area can be served by gravity sewer. So the proposal is, and our rule is, if we can serve by gravity, if we can extend the gravity system, we need to do that. So that's why we're doing gravity system and not pressure. Now, the cost to reach these property owners from the existing gravity system to serve them would have been, is about $100,000. And that would have been borne by them and possibly a property owner that would also benefit. But that was really too much for them to shoulder. So when they came to staff, I suggested that we form a reimbursement district, that the city extend the sewer and then get paid back as people connect to the system. Here is the area that we advertised for the reimbursement district. Now, this is on Northeast 36th Drive and West Devils Lake Road. The sewer can be extended to serve the properties outlined in black. It's about 550 feet. It's going to cost about $120,000. At the time I advertised this, we were assuming nine potential benefited properties, and that came out to about $13,000 per property. Now, after I got comments back from people in the advertised district, there was one home that was already sewered, they've already paid to be sewed. And so initially, I had them in the district. I went ahead and took them out. It's right here. And I had this property owner, because it could be a duplex, or at the time I thought maybe it could be subdivided into two lots, or just a little bit shy of being able to subdivide that into two lots. So I changed the number from nine potential benefited properties to seven. Now, that's what I'm coming, that's a modified district other than what you're going to hear testimony on tonight. So they've only seen the first proposal with all nine properties. I'm suggesting that if we go forward with the reimbursement district, we take two out. Or we take one out and we only assess the one lot, one lot. So one of the things that, when I heard from the property owners, one of the problems with the reimbursement district, or one of the issues, I guess, is that the city pays for the line to be installed, and then the property owners pay to connect. They pay the full amount to connect. There's no financing. So in this case, they would have the $13,000 if you're going by the number one or number two. I'm on. So that was one concern I had, is people don't, you know, didn't want to have to just come up with $15,000 or so cash to connect to the sewer. Also, in our ordinance, if you have a gravity line that goes in front of your home, we require that you connect within six months. require that you connect within six months. So all these benefited properties, whether their systems were failing or not, by our ordinance, would need to connect within six months. So I heard a lot of negative, you know, feedback on that. They didn't want to have to do that. Another option is instead of a reimbursement district, we form a local improvement district. The local improvement districts can be initiated by the property owners, 50 percent or more of the people in the assessed district, or it can be initiated by city council. The nice thing about local improvement districts compared to reimbursement districts for financing, people can begin making payments. And in fact, the payments are based on the life of the local improvement district. So that same amount of money essentially would then be paid back monthly. But you would start being assessed whether you connected or not, or if your property was vacant or not. You still would be assessed for your share of the sewer. So that's kind of the two differences. And why I bring that up is because I'm going to throw out another option. Instead of doing a reimbursement district, that we potentially make this, this area a local improvement district to allow for the financing. The other issue that came up when I began to look at this area, and I wanted to let everyone know that this is really ultimately, this, this whole area in black does not have sewer. Some of it's developed on the south, but primarily there's a 4.8 acre parcel undeveloped on the north. If, so another option or a future could be that we could go ahead and extend the local improvement district boundary to serve this entire area. So this would be fully served with sewer. Now, that would, you know, it would cost a lot of money to build it, a half a million dollars. But then there's 53 or so potentially benefited properties, depending on how much you assess the parcel that's undeveloped. And I used planning's formula to come up with a number there. That does bring the cost per property down. But again, that's, that's another option. So I'm going to summarize the options, and of course, Mr. Chandler, if you want to clarify anything at this point.
Yeah, just to, just to jump back in and recap a little bit on the reimbursement district versus the local improvement district. The reimbursement district has the advantage of the city in that we pay for the construction and install the sewer line, and then within six months, the funds are reimbursed to the city. The city is not a bank under that circumstance. The downside for the property owners, of course, is that they have to come up with $13,000 or $17,000, whichever you end up with, or $10,000 if you go with the third one. And they would have to come up with that within six months of the time of the installation of the sewer line. The local improvement district, on the other hand, the city again installs the sewer and pays for the cost of that. The advantage to the property owner is that they can spread the payment out over the life of the improvement district. So they have monthly payments. And then also sometime within that 20-year period, which is the length of the improvement districts we've done in the past, they would hook up to the, to the system. The downside for the city is that we become a bank. And when you are a bank, you have to have money to be able to loan out. Now, as we have looked at our unfunded, or unbonded assessment fund, where this money would come from, we have approximately $500,000 in that. So this essentially would tap out for any future improvement districts unless we, until such time as the money is repaid and we recoup it, or we add more funds to that. So as you, as you go through and look at these decisions, it's important to make that distinguished. There's some advantages and disadvantages to both the city and the, and the owners that would be served by this sewer.
So I'm going to summarize with your options. You can do nothing. You can approve the formation of the reimbursement district with seven properties as advertised. You can initiate a local improvement district for the same seven properties. I'm sorry. I, okay, no. I don't...
Start over.
Start over, because I'm only giving you the option, no. You can form the district with nine properties or with seven properties. You can do a reimbursement district or a local improvement district. Or you can initiate a local improvement district to serve the 53 potential connections or the larger expanded area. I think that's...
Okay, if you'll go back to the map, and I'll just recap that as well a little bit. So if you look at, again, your first option is to do nothing. If you do nothing, then the people that have their septic systems would then be responsible for replacing, repairing their septic systems. The second is to approve the formation of a local, no, I want to go back to the other one.
Go back to the big one?
Yep. Is to create a reimbursement district that is essentially these lots right here. Okay? And, and again, in that case, if it's a reimbursement district upon its, the completion of the installation, all of the owners would have six months to pay their fee and connect into the system. If it's under a local improvement district, again, this area and the sewer comes, this is the end of the existing sewer, it comes down around the corner, and under a local improvement district, they again would begin paying on a monthly basis for the, for the cost of their, of their sewer fee, or sewer installation fee, and the city would essentially finance that over time. Now, the next option would be, and you can do this in one or two sections, would be to extend the sewer down to this point and pick up all of these properties right in here. Now, you can do, and I mentioned you can do it in two ways. One is that you can make that all one reimbursement district or one local improvement district, again, with the same benefits and disadvantages. Or you can do them in two separate ones, where you deal with this one first and then begin, then begin the second phase of that, of either a reimbursement district or a local improvement district. There is mud?
So what you're going to hear testimony on tonight is just for the original, all the public has seen, has been noticed, is for the original advertised reimbursement district. Let you know where they'll be coming from.
Okay, so it's really not even an option to discuss the other part because they haven't been noticed, right?
If, okay, so if you were interested in going through the expanded, we would have to do a new public hearing. We'd have to do a new notice. We'd notice all of the extended properties, and we'd sort of start over again. Yeah.
And then again, that would be if you did it all at once. If you did it with a, is that as part of a second district, you could proceed forward with the first one and then start the process with the second one?
But we still have to have a hearing. If we changed from a reimbursement district to a local improvement district for the small area, we will still have to have another public hearing and notice it as a local improvement district instead of a reimbursement district.
Yes, please.
If we did it in two stages, the property owners wouldn't see any reduction in the assessment amount, correct?
No, because you would be going one right after another, so the costs would be the same.
But, but the cost per property would be higher because it would be based on a smaller area, correct?
That would be correct.
So if we want to reduce the price per property, we would need to include a larger area.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Whichever one of these that we select, maybe the LID, because that, that would be the one that they'd pay over time. And what is the end date? I mean, if they live forever and have that same piece of property, is it the 20 years that it would be paid by?
The last improvement district we did was over a 20-year period.
Okay, and what if someone sells their house? Do they have to pay the full amount before the pay?
Yes, our last, our last district, we included triggers, house sale, house remodel of a 50 percent, or any time that the septic did need to be repaired. So there are other triggers.
And we could put conditions on it if that's the way we went. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
But the 20 years was, was determined by council, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
We could make that shorter.
Yes, we can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a kind of homework. All the, the seven or nine on the original have been contacted with certified mail?
Yes.
And that they, you've heard back from them?
I've heard back from all but two. I've talked to them or gotten correspondence from them.
From those two?
From all but two.
Do we know that they got theirs, was it a certified letter?
Oh, yes, they, they received the information, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. We do a certified, and then we also follow with a regular mailing. We've gotten none returned, so...
Okay. Then going to that same group, the smaller group, has there, was there any work researched done as far as the aging of the existing septic systems? We know the one is failing, so, but the other, I think there was a letter in the packet of, of somebody had bought property and it just refurbished their septic system in the last three years.
Right, I think he's...
The other five?
We haven't looked at the other five. We haven't looked at, inspected the condition or asked about the other five.
Just from documents or anything, we wouldn't, okay?
One of the other property owners wants to connect right away, though. That's next to the failing system on the same, just right next door. So she, she wants, she wants to connect right away.
And then, I have to ask, but has there been any contact on the bigger geography of the owner or owners, just informally, I understand we haven't noticed them, but as to future development plans early, if, if this was to go in, does that assist them, encourage them to develop sooner?
Well, if we, if we do go forward with that, we, you would, you would hear from them, I'm sure. But they did come in for pre-application, but there was no, they're just thinking about what they could possibly do with their, with their property. And sewer availability was an issue, is an issue, for sure.
A positive.
So it was more of a fact-finding discussion on their part?
Yeah. Well, okay, so there's been a touch there, their thinking. The other, I'm pretty sure I heard you, you say it, but part of council, city's goal is to make sure there's sewer in the entire city. Is that, so this is in that spirit, we're trying to find tools and have tools to assist in swapping out septic systems onto sewer that's viable. So this falls right in line.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Question, do you have a question? Okay. Can, is, can you open that slide again?
Sure.
The one where you expanded the extra properties. There. That's a big vacant lot. Is it, is it a single ownership?
This, this property is the... This property is the 4.8 acres. It's under one ownership. It's actually zoned commercial, which does make it hard to, I mean, the potential type of development is, you know, hard to pin down at this point, because with a commercial property, 4.8 acres, there's a lot of things it could do.
Absolutely. And it opens up more avenues with the sewer installed. Yeah. Okay, that, that helps. And then just a kind of a general question, and maybe it's more for Debbie, but what's the failure rate on repayments on these kind of things when, when we ask the homeowners to pay?
I want to have to bring back the information. I do not know that off the top of my head.
Just in your general experience, do you, you see it as a problem?
No, because of the trigger points. There are things that trigger it when you would have to pay it, pay it back in full. So, no, my experience with improvement districts is that they're pretty safe as far as repayment goes.
So the city being the banker is not a huge risk?
Not in my experience. But I can, I can see, check for our community for certain and see what we've had.
Mayor, may I ask one more question? I didn't realize that that was commercial, that larger lot. And so how, how do you figure out, is that one ownership and they pay one $10,000?
No, they were, based on the formula, again, this would be something we'd really, a number we'd have to hone in on, but based on the formula from, that planning uses, it was a potential 39 units, and that's the number I used.
That's how you got to 53?
Correct. And there was 19 plus, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I have two people signed up for testimony. That was opposition. I think you're both in opposition. No, pro. Okay, so we go pro first. Diane Rodriguez. Diane, Diane, sorry.
You have heard tonight about the...
Diane, I know I've said your name, but you need to say it for the record.
Diane Rodriguez, and we live at the corner of Northeast 36th and West Devils Lake Road. And we have the property with the failing system. We are hugely in favor of many of these options that put a sewer system in front of our house. Our septic system is approximately 40 years old, so it has served its purposes and has lived its life, but we are at a point where we have to make a change. When we bought our house, we knew it was on the septic system. We had hoped all along that when we reached this point, the sewer line would already be there, because I've kept track of discussions with the city. The city has had about sewer-ing various points of the city, and I was kind of keeping my fingers crossed that the sewer line would come first rather than the septic system standing on its last legs. That hasn't, it hasn't quite happened that way. But the point of wanting the city sewer line in is that we only wanted to do this once. We didn't want to face the prospect of replacing a septic system and then five years down the road, having to connect to city sewer system and absorbing anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 in cost each time. We're really happy that the city has discovered that they can extend that gravity line, which literally is around the corner and about a block and a half from our house. We would like, a gravity line would be much easier for us to hook into, much easier to deal with than a pressure line, and probably easier for everyone all the way around because there's less, less equipment to maintain in the future. So basically, in short, we are very happy to hook up to our sewer line. We would prefer that it be a gravity line. I don't know if I can say this yet or not. I think the expanded district is what we would be kind of hoping for, but we'll take what we can get, but we just hope that you do approve some kind of sewer line being set up on West Devils Lake Road and 36th to help us alleviate our issues. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it very much. And then John Miller.
I'm John Miller. I live on 36th Drive also. And I'm going to read a letter I actually wrote to Stephanie. I received a letter that the sewer line being installed down my street on 36th Drive to accommodate one house on the street. The letter states that it'll be beneficial, beneficial to my property. I don't see that since I bought the property a little over three years ago, and the septic tank was, excuse me, replaced at the time. The reason I replaced it is because it was failing. So there was no sewer lines, so the best option is have it done. If I knew the city was going to change this, I would have waited three years. But there was no indication that they were going to repair the, put a sewer line in or any kind of repair was going to be done to the sewer line, gravity or otherwise. A gravity system on my property most likely will not work. or otherwise. A gravity system on my property most likely will not work. My property actually sits below the street level, and my sewer line comes out about 10 feet below my house, where my septic system is, because my septic system sits way below the street, almost 15 feet. So, my sewer system would have to be a pressure system to bring it up to your sewer line, because I don't think they dig a sewer line that deep in this town. $13,000 is a lot of money for me to spend, and I just spent $5,000 on a septic system that's working perfectly. I understand a sewer line needs to be installed through the city, and it's always beneficial for the whole community. But, there's other people in my town, in my neighborhood that are on fixed incomes, and it'd be tough for them. I know it'd be tough for me, because right now I just put all my money into my house. A LID is an option. LID is an option for everybody. It's, it'd be tougher, but if it's a monthly thing, it'd be better than $13,000 to $17,000 within six months. And I can reconnect at any time. By 20 years, my septic would probably need to be replaced again. The, I just feel that a LID would be better or nothing at all right now, and that the failing system, have them repair their own system. It's a little mean to say that, I know, but why should everybody else pay for their problem? Also, that the, why doesn't they, why don't they go all the way to the top of the hill, as the larger map says? That would be beneficial to the city and to the people in the LID district. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
That's the end of everyone. I have on my list, anyone who wanted to speak on this issue who did not sign up? Please, come forward. Just sit in any microphone you like, state your name, and add it.
Good evening. My name's Melanie Emerson, and I also live on 36th. This gentleman's our neighbor. We also are below the street, and it would not be gravity for us. We have a wonderful system. We have a sand system, and we protect it, and we treat it, and we take good care of it, because it's so important. For us to hook up to the sewer, I believe we'd need to have a pump. How does it get from the back to the front? So, I agree with our neighbor. We don't need this sewer at this time. Our system is beautiful. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Any testimony from representatives of public agencies? Continuance or leave the record open?
I guess this public hearing is for the district, the reimbursement district. So, if we change directions, we'll need a public hearing anyway. So, you know, in that case, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and the record.
Second. Motion to second, discussion? Yeah, I would have to agree. I think we've got a bigger, bigger issue ahead of us. So, yeah, I just don't want anyone to panic and think we're closing it, moving forward. I think we're in agreement. We're going to close it just to look at the other options and give everyone a chance to testify. With that, do I need a roll call? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. And so, we close the record. We close the hearing. Da-da, 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 da-da. Okay, we don't have the city attorney here. Nothing that he left us with, Kathy, to read?
But for the ordinance, when we get to that part, I can read the title.
Well, that closes that, right? You come with that?
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess, shouldn't we provide some direction to staff, rather than just let this hang?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make sure I'd done with that script.
Okay. I thought you were moving on the ordinance.
No, no, just done with the script. Get off that page. So, yes, what would you suggest? Mr. Anderson.
I guess I would like to take a look at the bigger picture, the LID and bigger geography, because I'm motivated to get more of the city sewered and off septic systems. So, I would like to take a look at that and, you know, work through using that vehicle as to what gets in the way and what might bounce us out of the bigger picture into a smaller LID, if that's at all possible and practical.
Would agree with that. Yep, yep.
I would also, I just would like to say that it seems that larger option, the 53, would provide more service for the city, which we need to be doing, and it would also drop the price to the folks that would be responsible for paying for their part of it. And I'd really like to see more about that.
Yeah, and I would like to know the thoughts of the large landowner. If at all possible, I remember living through this in East County Portland, and it was quite a mess, but it ended up benefiting everybody. But, yeah, we've got to be sensitive to the expense that each homeowner has to bear, whether they can or cannot afford it, and so.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the other thing I would say, and I don't know how to, because I didn't hear what the, I know the rush, a failing system. I don't, didn't hear a timeframe rush, like I'm pumping daily or weekly now would be a real rush. So, I would like to encourage us to, you know, handle it with expedience, you know, assuming that the Roderickses are in, you know, a decision-making timeframe. They've got to do one or the other, and I'd like them, have them, get them on a sewer.
Is that enough for you, then?
I think so.
Everyone satisfied with that?
We don't have to make a motion?
Bring something back. If there's anything you want to plug into this now, feel free. Okay, all right. Now may I move on? Counselor Anderson?
I feel a dab.
All right, we're going to have ordinance 2017-04, and Kathy, you're going to read that instead of.
Yes. Mr. Chandler, do you have anything that you would like to talk about first before I read the title on 2017-04?
The only thing I really have on this is just first summary as to what the intent of this ordinance really is. It is, it piggybacks the state law, and right now, all cross connections are supposed to be tested once a year.
Cross connections apply.
It's a water cross connection. So, for example, this would, this really deals a lot with the buildings that have fire suppression. They come off, they dead-end, just like you have a dead-end water line. The water settles, things settle in it, that can come back into your water system. So, that's the connection, that's the cross connection. The way to prevent that is through a backflow preventer, which is required, and those backflow preventers are required to be tested annually. If they're not, this is where the state lacks the teeth and is depending on the city to have a little bit of enforcement power. Right now, the only enforcement we have of this is that we shut off their water. We wanted to find an intermediate step. That intermediate step under this ordinance would allow the city to then test and even require repairs on that, and then require the property owner to repay the city for that through their water bill. And if nothing happens at that point, then we can, or, you know, and then the ultimate option, of course, is to shut off the water, but this gives us an intermediate step on that. So, that's the purpose of it.
Yeah.
Ordinance 2017-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services, adding a new Chapter 13.18 Cross Connection Control, providing for the establishment and administration of cross connection regulations consistent with Oregon administrative rules, amending Chapter 13.12 Water and Sewer System Rates and Charges, Section 13.12.055 Cross Connection to remove outdated provisions.
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2017-04?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Ward is absent. Thank you.
Well, we do, now, do we count him as absent, or do, here we go. We need a yes to get a majority?
That's a yes?
That is a yes.
Motion carries.
So, we can go straight to the second? We go straight to the second reading?
We can go to the second reading. Second reading for ordinance 2017-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services, adding a new Chapter 13.18 Cross Connection Control, providing for the establishment and administration of cross connection regulations consistent with Oregon administrative rules, amending Chapter 13.12 Water and Sewer System Rates and Charges, Section 13.12.055 Cross Connection to remove outdated provisions. Requesting approval of second reading of ordinance 2017-04.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for filling in tonight.
Mayor Williams, before we start the next section, I would like to request an amendment to, under Special Order of Business, Section J. And I'll pass this out. We were just, we were able to complete the, all five applicants for the background and the reference check and the interviews for the Budget Committee, and our Budget Committee meeting begins on, our first meeting is scheduled for the 17th, so we don't have another City Council meeting between now and then. And I have, I'll pass out these applications, but we have five applicants for three positions for the Budget Committee that I would like to get council's consideration to amend the agenda to hear this, this section number 12, actually. It would be number 12 on our agenda.
Yeah?
Motion?
I move to amend the agenda to include consideration of Budget Committee applicants.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second, motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. So, someone's going to have to walk me through what our procedure's going to be with this. Counselor Hoagland and I interviewed the applicants. At this point, just say who we would move forward? Okay. Counselor Hoagland, you'd like to go first?
Sure.
We're going for three positions, right?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
My recommendations are Kevin Honbaum, Chester Norakis, and Amanda Cherry-Holmes.
Okay. I would recommend Mr. Jerry Warner, Kevin, I'm going to try, hom, hom, sorry, and Chester Norakis.
I move to appoint Chester Norakis to the Budget Committee.
I second.
Okay. We hadn't changed that procedure. We're doing it by the voice vote here.
I'm sorry, what?
We're just doing it by a voice vote here? We don't have to go through the rigmarole of the paper and all that again?
I didn't have any paper created. It looks like we may need some, but just a voice vote is fine.
All right, we'll do that. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Did we get a second?
Yes.
We have a motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
And I move to appoint Kevin Honbaum as a member of Budget Committee.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. We have Mr. Warner, we have Ms. Cherry-Holmes. Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jerry Warner to our Budget Committee.
A second?
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails.
I make a motion to approve Amanda, or to appoint Amanda Cherry-Holmes for the Budget Committee.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? I, while I applaud her effort and wanting to come forward, I just, I didn't see the qualifications, as opposed to Mr. Warner, who's got a lifetime of dealing with budgets. We've got someone new coming in, Mr. Honbaum, which I like to see, but I just, I just didn't see any, anything that led me to support her nomination. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Two nays?
There were two.
I'm assuming it's two nays. So, motion carries. So, that's Kevin, Chester, and Amanda.
Just to confirm, I have two nays on the vote. Okay, great.
Okay. Yeah, well, thank you to all the applicants. Appreciate you stepping forward. For Mr. Warner, we thank him for his past service. He's a valued member of the Budget Committee.
And I'd like to thank McNeil Smith for-
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, well, I did thank everyone for applying, but thank you to McNeil Smith. Okay, with that, we move on. Minutes of the work session meeting, September 23rd, 2016. Excuse me, and the minutes of the meeting on December 19th, 2016.
I move to approve the minutes of the work session meeting on September 23rd, 2016, and the minutes of the meeting on December 19th, 2016.
Can we lump those together?
That's fine.
Second, motion to second, discussion?
I would like to not vote. I did not read, nor was I present.
I'd like to abstain. I'm abstaining.
Okay, that's all we have for. All right, thank you. Where the heck am I? Discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, city manager reports, nothing. Okay. We did have a question for you. Your blog, is that still up and alive?
It is up, not totally alive. But, yes, it is still in operation. I'm not updated as of now.
Okay, thanks. I was just thinking about that. Okay, actions, if any, based on executive session? We're going to need another executive session, please. Warner, Kathy, we did not complete our task.
At the next meeting?
Yep. Okay, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items?
Good evening again, Councilor Rex Capri, Newport. Again, speaking on this ballot measure number 21177, I would just like to ask that the council consider, after careful perusal of this measure and ordinance language and discussion, entertain- entertain making a motion to take a stand on this measure. I think it's important, due to the significance of the language and the unintended harm that it could possibly cause this county and even your community here. So I would ask that you either consider a motion, or a motion for a resolution, or put it on your agenda for your next meeting. But I think it's important, as elected officials, that you show the people that you represent that this is an important issue, and you need to take some kind of stand, to show them where you stand on this issue. So, again, I would ask you to consider some type of action on this.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward. Anyone else? Going, going, gone. Oh, she raised her hand. Come forward, please. Don't be shy. Just pick a microphone and state your name, please.
I'm Mary Waters, and the reason I'm here--
Mary, you're gonna need to move near that microphone. You can pull it towards you.
I'm Mary Waters, and the reason I'm here tonight is, well, I stumbled on the homeless issue when I was reading about what Amanda Cherry Holmes had to say. And it just brought some questions to mind. First of all, aren't we making taxes citywide off of the shops that are currently selling marijuana? As well as statewide? And if we are, why couldn't some of those funds be diverted into the homeless program? Or dealing with the homeless crisis? And then, I was also considering and wondering, has anybody thought about contacting various builders in the area and seeing if they could put five or 10 apartments into a 501(c)(3) lease onto the, the, well, Amanda Cherry Holmes and what she's doing with the homeless areas? And take a partial tax exempt or tax write-off for those apartments that they might donate to, dealing with the homeless issue for families and individuals? And then, that was, and then, is there any reason that the city itself couldn't, couldn't put the bill for, like, the electric and the sewage for anything that's used regarding the homelessness, as well as looking for a permanent structure? But from what I understand, the permanent structure is only for the wintertime, correct? Anyway, no, those are just some of the thoughts, and I just thought I'd come and ask them. And I also know that there is a lawyer named David Atkins in Eugene, whose law center deals exclusively with 501(c)(3), 3(c) charitable organizations. And just regarding the law and the tax exemption, and how to set them up and everything like that, I was just wondering if anybody hadn't, well, if nobody's known about him, then obviously they haven't consulted him, but if that information might be useful also. That was pretty much some total of it. But if nobody's using that marijuana tax being gained, then I'm thinking somebody needs to tap into that. Because, I mean, what, they're paying, like, 7% taxes above what we pay for cigarettes? That's like some serious tax money.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Going, going, gone? All right, we're moving forward. Announcements or comments by City Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if you've had an opportunity, or would appreciate a action from the commission, the council here, to do that letter of support to the Newburgh-Dundee bypass?
Oh, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
I would be glad to--
Yes.
--make a motion to authorize you to sign--
Yes.
--such a letter that the City of Lincoln City was, is very supportive of the efforts, financial and everything, political, to get the Newburgh-Dundee bypass completed. It's to the benefit of certainly Lincoln City and Lincoln County, and quite frankly, the entire Central Coast, so--
I agree. Yes, I would be more than in favor of that.
So, I make the motion.
All right. A motion to, and a second, any discussion? Do you know what we're talking about down there? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, anyone else?
Yep, there's a body attached. I just have a few things I just wanted to say, that our Neighborhood Association met this weekend, and I just wanted to say that we had a presentation by Officer Smith, and, is the chief still here? And I just wanted to give him a bit of a shout-out. He's excellent, and he came to our meeting muddy because he was chasing a bad guy. And that was kind of fun for everyone, not for him, but the rest of us. And he let us know, he provided an update to our neighborhood. We always ask for crime reports and what's happening in our neighborhood, and he provides a good, a good summary of things, and I would like to say, we had nothing happening. So that was wonderful. And also, he mentioned that he is moving to be the school officer, which is very wonderful, and congratulations to him. Glad to hear that, too. He's a great guy. And we also had a second presenter at our Neighborhood Association meeting, which was Jo Dana Bright. She's a Chief Information Officer for CERT. And if you've been following in the News Guard, maybe not the last couple, but she's been presenting 52 articles about how to be prepared for earthquakes and tsunamis and all that. And it's, it's been wonderful, and I would just like to encourage the newspaper to start those up again. She wasn't finished. Anyway, she's great. And, and another reason that I'm bringing this up now is that these are two really good examples of why organizing your neighborhood is important. You can bring, you can ask for presenters, as we do, and then we get current information about what is happening outside our little world, and also inside. So I'm just encouraging people out there in the community to consider organizing with your neighbors, and, and it doesn't have to be real formal, it's just a really good way to, to have a good time with your neighbors, too, so I wanted to bring that up. I have two more things. One is, also to the chief, that, you know, that speed sign that tells people how fast they're going? And I know it's not been too long ago, but at the next opportunity that it's convenient, could we ask you to move that to Logan Road by the curve before the, either before it or following it, before the state park? I know this has been spring break, but if you're walking, you're taking your life in your own hands, walking around there, that corner. And also, I want to give a final, anyway, a big thank you to the Public Works, the emergency coordinator, and, for the city, and also our Neighborhood Emergency Coordinator, for finally erecting that tsunami evacuation route signs. I can put a big check mark off of something that's been bothering me for many, many years. So thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Me.
Please, hide it out.
I have something that was brought to my attention, and I don't know if we can do anything about it. When signs are put up, there are lots and lots of regulations. If signs are changed, there's lots of regulations. But when a business moves and the sign remains, there's no way to enforce updating that sign. And I don't know if that's a freedom of speech, change of face issue, that we can't ask them to take down or cover up a business that's no longer there. I, I heard a story today of a family who came into town, hungry, with three little boys, I think it was, saw the beach and pizza sign, they got out of the car, and there's no beach and pizza. Hasn't been in several years. There's other examples of that, too, around town. I think that we have some provision for off-premise signs, and that would be a language thing. So I don't, I don't know if maybe we can make this correlate to that. But it's, it looks trashy when there are signs to places that no longer exist.
Maybe we could have a meeting at the Pines and then do some carryover?
Right, that's another one. And they don't want to lose their sign privilege, in that case, but they could cover it up. And maybe make it within 90 days of the business leaving. Something has to be done to, to change it. I'd like to explore that, see where we can go with that. The other issue I have is, there's a League of Oregon Cities, Region 1 Small Cities meeting on May 5th in Toledo. I'm interested in going, wondering if anybody else is interested. The agenda includes affordable and workforce housing.
Yes, I've signed up.
Me, too.
Okay.
I'll get you signed up.
Thank you.
Council Casper?
Yes, there's still an outstanding issue with a citizen's concern, and Council Ward might want to assume parliamentarian at this time. I'm concerned about the request for records for the mayor's email from his private account regarding city business. And I understand the mayor has stated that he has nothing, however, the disclosure of personal accounts of the email indicate that he was in contact with others regarding city business on that account. I move for the council to instruct the mayor to submit all emails associated with all email accounts used for city business, including those from his sub-rest account to the city recorder, within seven working days from today.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm making a motion.
Well, I heard that. I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Okay. You guys gotta say something, or it dies. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I was concerned about the financial implications of any actions of an individual not serving on council business. And I've learned that we could individually, or as a council, be financially associated for any fees, if there's any suits that move forward. And I want to be free of that burden for the city council or any individuals. And so I just wanted to be clear that, Mr. Mayor, if you do not return any emails, or you refuse to, that's also a violation of the Oregon code. It could be tampering with public records. So if you, if that's your choice, then I don't think that we should be responsible for your denial of these records.
If I can, maybe somebody can help me. It feels like your motion is asking us to be the policeman, and I'm not sure I want to be the policeman. I think there's existing law and regulations on disclosure when, when asked, public record. It seems to me that it would be the responsibility of the asker to pursue legal ramifications to obtain, if, if they think there is. You know, I don't know that that's our role of a council. I'm just questioning, but it doesn't feel like my role.
Well, the city has an obligation to respond to records requests, and a records request has been made. And we are part of the body that is represented by one of our individual members, who has failed to comply with this request, and therefore violated our own resolution.
See, that's where I disagree.
Okay.
We've, we've asked, shared the request of that asker to all of us to share the, or disclose emails. So we, I think our obligation is done. We have notified each and every one of us to bring forth. From, from there, you know, I'm not gonna go through and check you, or the mayor, or anybody else. It's, I think, up to the asker, as I said before, to pursue legal ramifications.
I'm just following through with the request for legal records, Council Anderson. And this person asked October 31st, we were not on council. The request is made three times since then, so I'm just clarifying to relieve us of any financial responsibility that moves forward, that we are not responsible because you feel we're not the police, and I feel it's our obligation to at least invite the mayor to do so.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm at a loss for words here. I don't even know if we have the authority to vote on this.
We do.
That the Department of Justice has clearly said they're not even gonna move forward on it.
They, that's, nothing about the sub-rest email.
I still have the floor, thank you.
May I ask a question? Oh, he's not finished.
Yeah, go ahead and ask a question.
I was just curious if there's, I mean, you don't have to answer this, of course, I'm just curious. Is there a reason you wouldn't want, want to get this behind us?
Oh, I think this is behind us, way behind us. This is just another, boy, I've gotta watch my tongue. I'm gonna leave it at that. I'll just, I'll just--
Well, Mr. Mayor--
Soak my--
We, we do have--
--council. So, yeah, what the hell? Any other discussion?
Yes. There has been a person, I mean, we've already received an email from another person, requesting for your login to the following city financial software system, court management, blah, blah, the city council insurance system. It was requested of you to forward information to this person, but they needed to have a letter from you on the official stationary or software email. And the very next day, the person in charge of this government body wrote a letter to you, email, and said that this person wanted to send this court information, but needed official email to send it to, and was requesting your official city email, as requested by the person who sent the first email to you at your business residence. And this information was inadvertently sent as a public record to the DOJ. So if there's, maybe there's something you have forgotten about in your records, and if you don't want to submit them to the city recorder, perhaps we could find a mutual third party to review them.
Well, here's all I'm gonna say about this. I have been, for the last two years, chased, dismerched, maligned. I have listened to people call me evil, a liar, a crook. And I've tried my best to just let it roll off. I've tried to uphold the dignity of this office by not responding. In, in a way that I normally might have. And I'm not gonna bite tonight. I will say, I have an agreement with this council. I will say, I have an agreement with this council. I have an agreement that I read a letter, an apology. The council by motion said, "Read this, this motion is dead." The council agreed by vote. They will not take this up again. I would consider that a violation. I'm not going to respond any further. If you want to continue to read old information, I can't stop you. I had hoped we'd move forward. I consider it petty. I consider it mean-spirited, pointless. We've spent, I know the one Fijis from the Pope investigation came to over $70,000. $70,000 for that letter. That doesn't include the attorney's time for the ethics investigation. That doesn't include the attorney's time and the chief of police's time for a DOJ investigation that council was not even aware of by our city attorney. Frankly, I think we've got bigger things to worry about. We've wasted two years of our time. If the new council wants to pick this up and keep running with it, go for it. I can't stop you. But I will say, you will not get an ounce of cooperation from me in this matter. I will not be turning over anything, no matter what you say. You want to get a warrant, get a warrant. And then, that warrant will say, hey, there's nothing here. But I'll leave it at that. So, we have any further discussion?
Can we hear the motion again?
The motion was to require the mayor to turn over any personal emails concerning, any city-related business from his personal email account. Is that a correct summation?
Yes.
And we have a second on that.
And that, just for clarification, that was through a public information request by somebody. I mean, is that what she's talking about?
Yes, it's a public information request and the apology you gave to the council was on a different matter. So, that was entirely different. This is a public requests record. And I'm just wanting to clarify that we are not responsible for any denial of information that you choose not to give out. So, just to clear the air, I'm not going to pursue it. I just don't want us to be financially responsible for things that we don't have to be.
Fair enough. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious if, if I may, Counselor Casper, is there more to this? Because right now, you just said that you would not want us to be financially responsible if this moves forward, which would be out of our control, but-
I don't know what lawsuits will follow or could. You know, I don't know what the applicant for the request would be doing. But failing to comply with, with public records is a violation of our own ordinances, our own resolutions. And if he acted as an individual outside of the council, then he's in violation of our own charter. So, we don't, we don't know.
I'm going to stop the discussion here. Perhaps you want to bring an attorney in to start giving legal opinions. Beyond that, are you satisfied with that answer?
Well, I-
Be a yes or no and we'll just get down with this discussion.
No, this is not to belabor it. I just, I just heard, Counselor Casper, you repeated the motion. It didn't include the funding element or the, that her request is for the city not to cover any costs that are incurred because of any non-action? And that's the part that I would be interested in was, would be that, that part, so-
If I heard it correctly, there was a motion and then that part was brought up in the discussion section.
Okay.
That was not part of your original motion. That was part of the discussion.
I can add it to my motion. That's my main concern. That is my main concern.
If you didn't add it to your motion, so if you want to amend your motion, you need to amend your motion.
I will amend my-
As a discussion point.
I amend my motion that we instruct the mayor to submit all his emails associated with email accounts used for city business, including a sub-rest Gmail account, which could implicate us for any financial responsibility or obligation for any suits that pursue as a result of denial of these documents.
Do you need another second? Or withdraw of a second and a second to this or just let it die?
Okay.
Just asking. Someone's got to, okay, I'll second it.
Counselor Hinton had-
Someone needs to draw their second and amend their second or don't let it die.
And I was only, I'm mainly interested in the financial responsibility of this, so I'm conflicted at the moment.
Well, then, maybe the thing to do is to speak to an actual attorney before you make this motion. That would be my recommendation. But that's just me.
I have spoken to an attorney.
Like I said, I think if you are concerned, you need to speak to an attorney.
I'm sorry, I need to withdraw my second.
All right, withdraw my motion.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we've got Celebrate Recovery tomorrow night, Faith Baptist Church, 6:00 PM. Come have a hot meal if you are dealing with addictions or anything like that. We'd love to see you and help you. We have sunrise service. The Ministerial Association will be meeting at the dock on 7:00 AM, Sunday the 16th, for eastern service. We have our Budget Committee meeting, Monday the 17th, 5:00 PM for the Urban Renewal Agency, 6 o'clock for the city. And we have a council work session at 2:30. Look at me bang these out. Then, we have the Oregon Coast Garage Sale starting, is that correct, on the 21st? Get in line. I am so excited about that. Maybe we'll have a little sunshine. Anyone else?
Yes, I do. So, I have been contacted by people who have raccoon problems and they are not sure what to do. Apparently, it's illegal to trap them or relocate them or anything like that, so I would like to know what particularly we have in our ordinances that can or cannot do anything with raccoons. And apparently, if a raccoon is trapped, the apparent charge is $75 per removal. I don't know what happens to it after that, but it's a concern of some that have contacted me. So, if we can get information on that. Additionally-
Look quick, because we heard from our attorney about that, that they can be trapped, but if they are trapped, they have to be removed from the county and euthanized. So, you can trap them, but you got to take them out, Kelly.
All right, cool. Same thing is on the website for the Lincoln City Eclipse website. I see links for viewing, parking and glasses. I know before we said that we were not going to sell glasses ourselves, but then the link, what would the link be any different than if we're just going to give one link for one particular manufacturer of glasses? Additionally, the links don't work for the viewing and parking, so just a possible update for that and the time that we might have some information on that. Also, the language for safety, as far as looking directly at it, you know, it's not safe to look at it. I think some other sites say you will go blind if you look at it, so I don't know if it's as strong a language as possible to really indicate how dangerous it is to look directly at it and, aside from exactly the totality. So, those are some concerns of mine.
Okay. Anyone else? May God bless you all and may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.
Mics are off.